Call our work meeting together for January 21st. We are starting at 5:35. Council, we'd like to start out with any type of return report from any of your committees and any updates. So, do any of you have anything you'd like to share with us? Not a? Clint? Do you want to talk about the phase?
Talk about what?
Do you want to talk about the legislative session?
Oh, yeah. The legislative session has started this week. So, bills are just, just starting to be in committee. Our, our role there as the member of Utah League of Cities and Towns is just to watch out for overreach from the state and to make sure that, you know, when we're talking about mandates and things, that we have a say and we can represent our side, I guess, to kind of protect what we have here as a city is, and allow us to, to vote for our, our ordinances and not be mandated by the state for, it's part of, part of what we're doing, so.
Okay. And I know Zach is sitting on that same committee, so the, the fun begins for you two gentlemen, as well as your coach in the back. Okay. Does anybody else have anything they want to share?
Gary, did you feel like that meeting with the legislature, legislators was productive? Are you, are you worried after the meeting more? Are you more optimistic about what you thought the session would look like? I mean, they can all be nice, very collegial, but I don't want them to go back and, and not have our backs when they actually go back to Salt Lake.
Well, one thing you can never do is guarantee that the legislator is going to continue to take the same position they just elected him to take, because things change dynamically up there all the time. And remember, we talked about the tiny bill? Well, I've already got an invitation to go up and talk to leadership about that bill, right? But it was pretty evident that we were not real happy about the tiny bill.
Right.
But, so.
The speaker mentioned that he, you had brought up some things he was not aware were in that bill. So, thanks for your, thanks for knowing it. Like the back of your hand, because there's, I mean, I saw that in the bill file, it's just absolutely enormous.
It is.
And so, I'm sure even, obviously even the speaker doesn't know everything that's in every bill. So, appreciate you bringing that to its attention.
Thank you. I won't keep you up today. I've got a meeting with him Tuesday and will report back to you soon.
Very good. Yeah. You know how I feel on that one. Okay. Anybody else have any updates they'd like to talk about? If not, I will let you know that we failed to put our training moment on our agenda. So, I'm actually going to go ahead and allow Mr. Crane to continue with our training moment. Today, he'll talk about a conditional use permit.
Wait a minute. I'm looking at the minutes. How can you add up to the minutes?
He's saying he thinks it's a violation.
I just, I just woke up. I don't want to go back to sleep. Yeah. Let's hear it. Oh, I see you're using the other mic now.
Yeah, yeah. You scared him away.
Stay away from the head lures.
Okay. So, what I wanted to do is just take a few minutes, because I know we, we've got a lot we want to discuss water-wise, so just to.
No, we don't.
If you just keep it on the clock, we'll, we'll be good. I wanted to introduce you, and some of you have already been introduced to it through Mason. The Land Use Institute is, is a, a land use organization that was set up by Senator Nederhauser years ago to do nothing else but perform land use training for elected officials, appointed officials. And it's a great, great resource. And Meg uses it quite often. Meg Ryan, the Meg Ryan from the league, actually uses it quite often. If you've gotten on the site, you've seen how beneficial it is. Brent Bateman actually puts on a lot of those. And you're going to see, it's, it's not boring. He's, he's a lot more entertaining than I am. I should have brought popcorn tonight, actually, is what I thought, but pop popcorn, sorry.
It's not that long.
It's not that long. It's 12 minutes long. So, I'm going to go ahead and play that for you. And I think it says it all, but we can, in future meetings, we can talk about conditional uses a little more, because that is the focus, a big focus of attention, not only up the legislature, but in the courts right now. So, I'll play that for you.
Oh? Uh-oh. There's some light above the clouds.
Good evening, and welcome to the Land Use Academy of Utah Forum on Conditional Uses. My name is Brent Bateman. I'm the lead attorney in the Office of the Property Rights Ombudsman, and I'll be your moderator for this forum. There's been a lot of discussion about conditional uses and how to approach them. In this luau video, we would like to delve into the details about the conditional use statute and hopefully clear up any confusion. And to help us do that, we have assembled a panel of some of the most distinguished and experienced land use minds in the state. First, we would like to welcome Mayor Floyd DeBarber from the town of Henryville, Utah.
Thank you. We're glad I'm here.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, Mr. Mayor. Next, we have County Planning Commissioner Eileen Dover from Logan County. Welcome, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Glad to have you. And finally, please welcome City Attorney Martin Prince from the firm of Prince &amp; Munz, P.C. Mr. Mayor, welcome.
Thank you.
So glad that you could all take time out of your busy schedules to be here and to help us with this discussion on conditional uses. Now, I'd like to throw the first question out to you, Mr. Mayor, if that's okay? Now, the first question. Mayor, imagine a developer came to your town's planning commission with a conditional use application to build a large dog kennel, proposing to house over 50 dogs in a residential zone. The question is, what is the first thing you would normally do?
Thank you, Brent. Well, my concern obviously is for the citizens of my city, my constituents, the neighbors in that residential zone. Now, dog kennels can be noisy and smelly. Now, my constituents will not want a noisy, smelly kennel in their neighborhood, so we must deny the application outright.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, but that answer is absolutely incorrect. Now, I'll throw the question open. Anyone else? Anyone? What is the first thing we must do when we get a conditional use permit application? This question is worth 10 points. Yes, Planning Commissioner Dover?
The first thing to do is to check your code to determine if the dog kennel is a permitted use, a conditional use, or a prohibited use in that zone. If it is a conditional use, you would apply the law of conditional uses to that application.
Congratulations, Planning Commissioner Dover. That answer is absolutely correct. 10 points to you. Now, Commissioner, you may take the difficult follow-up question or pass.
Oh, difficult follow-up? I think I'll go ahead and pass, Brent.
Oh, yeah. Putting pressure on the other contestants. I like that. Okay. So, the follow-up question goes to you, Attorney Prince. And this one is worth 20 points. Are you ready? Here's the question. You've noted that the dog kennel in question is listed as a conditional use in the zone. According to state law, can you now deny the application because dogs are noisy and smelly? And, in order to help our studio audience, we will show the state statute on conditional uses. Remember that our panelists cannot see the statute, so please do not shout out the answer. Your answer, Attorney Prince, can the application be denied?
Well, let me think here, Brent. The state statute states that a conditional use shall be approved if reasonable conditions are proposed or can be imposed to mitigate the reasonably anticipated detrimental effects of the proposed use in accordance with applicable standards. That means that if we have listed a dog kennel as a conditional use in a residential zone, our city wants dog kennels in the zone, and we shall approve them if reasonable conditions can be imposed to mitigate the detrimental effects. We can only deny the application if we cannot substantially mitigate the detrimental effects by imposing reasonable conditions.
Time's up now. Is that your final answer?
Our city listed the dog kennel as a conditional use, so in most cases, we cannot deny the dog kennel's conditional use application.
Congratulations. That is correct. Well done. Well done. 20 points to you, and the correct answer has earned you a bonus question for 10 points. Are you ready? Are you nervous? Okay, here we go. Your 10-point bonus question. What conditions can you impose?
I presume the detrimental effects of a kennel with 50 dogs would be noise from barking and probably smell from the dogs. So, the city would impose a reasonable condition that would reduce the neighbor's ability to hear the barking noise, such as requiring the kennel to be kept at least 1,000 feet from other homes. You would also impose a condition that would reduce the smell, such as requiring cleanup and sanitary waste disposal.
Judges, can we accept that answer?
Ah.
Sorry, sorry. I'm sorry, but you are only partially correct. You have omitted a critical factor. Yes, Planning Commissioner Dover?
The conditions you impose must comply with standards in your ordinance.
Very good. The next five points to you. Yes, your next step is to determine the detrimental effects and impose reasonable conditions to mitigate those effects. But those conditions must comply with standards in your ordinance. You cannot just make conditions up. Very good. Now, before we continue, Gary, please tell our panelists what today's prize is.
Brent, tonight's winner will receive this beautiful lounge set valued at $1,500.
Oh. Thanks, Gary. Now, on to the next question. Are you ready? What is the meaning of the term "standard set forth in an applicable ordinance"? Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yes?
Could you repeat the question?
Oh, I'm sorry. That is incorrect, Mr. Mayor. Attorney Munz, now is your chance to steal.
Could I ask you to repeat that question for me, please?
I'm sorry. That is also incorrect. So, it is up to you, Planning Commissioner Dover. This question is worth 50 points, which will put you comfortably in the lead. Are you ready?
Yes.
What is your answer?
Could you repeat the question?
Sure, sure. No problem. I'll repeat the question. What is the meaning of standard set forth in an applicable ordinance?
The state statute requires that any condition that you impose upon a conditional use comply with standards in your ordinance. Standards are like goals that you have for your community that reflect what your citizens would like the community to be. They must be in your ordinance and should be objective and measurable. So, if you have a standard in your ordinance on noise, you can impose upon the dog kennel a condition that they take measures to reduce the noise to comply with the standard. If you don't have a standard on noise, you cannot impose a condition on noise. Thus, you will need to approve the dog kennel without imposing a noise.
Congratulations. That is absolutely correct. Very well done. So, at the end of our first round, the score is Mayor DeBarber, zero points. Attorney Munz has 15 points, and in the lead, Planning Commissioner Dover with 65 points. Very nice, very nice. Okay. And now, it's time to move on to our lightning round. I'm going to say your name and then ask you a question about conditional uses. Each question is worth 10 points. Are you ready? Here we go. Mr. Mayor, what three things are found in most local zoning codes?
Voting booths, and people that vote, and constituents.
Oh, I'm wrong. I'm sorry. Most codes contain permitted uses, conditional uses, and a statement that if a use is not listed as permitted or conditional, it's a prohibited use. Commissioner, are you required by law to include conditional uses in your zoning code?
No.
That's absolutely correct. You do not need to include conditional uses in any code. Attorney Munz, what is the standard of review for a conditional use application?
Well, conditional uses are an administrative decision that can be made by whatever administrative body is appointed to that task by the local legislative body. Oftentimes, conditional uses are decided by the planning commission, but do not need to be. The standard for review for an administrative decision is substantial evidence in the record. That means if your conditional use decision is supported in the record by substantial evidence, it is not arbitrary and capricious and will be upheld.
Oh, I'm sorry. Your answer was absolutely correct, but it was way too long and lawyer-y. Mr. Mayor, when an unpopular but legal conditional use application causes an uproar in your community, and hundreds of angry citizens come to the planning commission meeting to express their frustration and to demand that you say no, what is the proper action to take?
Take their side, deny the application, and win lots of votes.
Wrong! The correct answer is follow the law and make an evidence-based decision, even if it's unpopular. Commissioner, what do we do with public clamor?
That sounds like a great subject for a future luau video, Brent.
Absolutely correct. 10 more points to you. Now, Attorney Munz, what is the difference between public clamor and evidence?
Well, Brent, evidence is the substantive.
Oh, I'm sorry. That is incorrect due to the fact that you are going to be boring and lawyer-y again. And that means Planning Commissioner Dover is our winner! Yeah! And that is our forum for conditional uses for today. Please join us tomorrow for another luau forum on complicated legal matters, where more fabulous prizes will be given away. We'll see you then. And remember, if you have something listed as a conditional use that you always want to deny, change your ordinance to make.
Anyway, I think you get the idea. It's a fun bunch of videos. Why don't you just watch the videos? There's a number of different subjects, and they're all taught the same way, and they're just really short and right to the point, and they're entertaining. And so, I encourage you to take a look at those, because they do cover some subjects that are relevant to very relevant, but we're going to carry them along. With that, I'll conclude, because that's only 13 minutes.
I've got a question, Gary. In their form of an inquiry, where he said conditional uses don't have to be listed in the zoning ordinance, or something like that?
Oh, yes. So, what he's saying is that there are some jurisdictions that essentially have no conditional uses. They're all permitted, and they do that specifically so they don't get in trouble with subjective standards. And so, what they do is they give their planning commission specific rules on every use that they allow within the city, and they have, there's nothing that is conditional. You don't have any, any uses that are conditional. So, you do not have to have conditional uses in your ordinance. In, in certain zones, you may choose not to have conditional uses, because you want them to be so specific. You may have a special commercial zone or a special agricultural zone for certain types of agriculture, agricultural uses. A good example of that might be where you have an agricultural commercial zone, where you do agriculturally, commercially, commercial things. All of that can be regulated by a statute or, excuse me, by an ordinance, and you don't need the discretion that you do, because you don't have a use that will typically be obnoxious or have some type of negative impact on the surrounding area. Does that help? You don't have to have a conditional use.
It helps. So, but my mind is thinking, why then, if some of the type of, you call that a duty of duty, would you put that there with, before it comes in, and then you have to, you have to, to approve it despite their plan?
So, that makes sense. That's the most important thing I could even tell you tonight, is what I'm just saying. And that is that, as you go through your ordinance, make sure you ask yourself the question of whether or not every conditional use in that zone is something that you allow, even in the worst situation. And if it's not, if the answer is no, in even one situation in that zone, don't put it in as a conditional use. Do not allow it as a conditional use. And Chad is actually, I talked to him before the meeting, and he said he's gone through, that's what they're doing now, is going through the zones to make sure that everything would fit in at least some situation, that there's some mitigating factor that you could apply, no matter what the circumstance is. Dog kennel in the middle of a residential zone, you would have struck that by all means. You would have said, that's, no, I can't think of anything, any mitigating circumstance we can apply to this thing. If that's the case, don't put it in your bill.
So, maybe you know, for us to go through that list, I guess?
Yes. And it's good. Sometimes just go look at the table, and if you see something in there that you can't think of a mitigating factor for, it should go out.
Well, and then I think, too, over the years, the things that were conditional use, they realized that it's the same mitigating factor over and over and over again, so why isn't it just in the ordinance? And I'll take the trailers at.
On Main Street?
No, the construction ones for, you know, model homes. That's what I'm trying to say. And, you know, every time a new subdivision went in, that came, and it was always, it's a conditional use, but you got to do this, 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 and this. Well, it's the same every single time. So, it's like, why aren't we just reflecting the ordinance to say, if you're going to have a model home, you need to do this, and it never needs to come for a conditional use? So, they have taken, I think, quite a few off the books already over the nine or 10 years I've been here, so.
And I don't want to complicate things, but some conditional uses actually have specific, like home occupations and like pawn shops, they have specific conditions in there, but then add, in addition to that, and look at other negative impacts. So, you could, you could do that as well. And there are some that are specifically named in there, but we don't expect you to name every conditional use and have every criteria in there, but there are some good, there's some substantial criteria in there for conditional uses. And planning commission, thank goodness, makes all those decisions. It's appealable to an appeal authority, which is a hearing administrator, a hearing officer. And so, you probably will not see them, but your point, to your point on your responsibility is to make sure that the right conditional uses are in place. Does that help?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. That was, I think that was a good training for considering what we've had in the past and probably going forward as well.
Yeah, one of those.
Just because you know the actors. Okay. We'll carry on then with our work meeting. And next up would be Tracy Probert, talking about our late municipal code and the consolidated fee schedule. And I'm going to make an announcement here at this time. Is that fine? Because I do know that as part of this consolidated fee schedule, and of course pertaining to the budget, we do have on our agenda, or what's included in there, is obviously our water study and, and what we want to do regarding the water rates. And we've asked the staff to put together a nice presentation for that, so that we can educate our, our citizens as well as ourselves. And rather than having that presented here, I'm going to actually ask that we hold off and present, make that presentation at the council meeting, rather than the work meeting, so that therefore, we've got those folks that I know that probably view that meeting probably more often than this one. And it's not a repeat and, I guess, a double presentation, because just like we don't want to have double presentations in our packet, I don't want to put the staff through that. So, I think I'd rather hold off and have it presented there and, you know, have it more of a public setting, so that it's full transparency. So, are you fine with that, Trace?
So, you're just talking the water part of it?
That, well, the water presentation of it, yes.
But you're going to go through the rest? Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we'll go ahead and have him proceed with, with what's else, what, everything else that's in there, so.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks.
So, in the ordinance 21-03, amending the consolidated fee schedule, it amends chapter and title in the municipal code, there are a few changes aside from the water rates. They're minor. It was noticed recently that we had received a number of requests for color photocopies, and we didn't have in our fee schedule a price for color photocopies, and they do cost quite a bit more than black and white, so we've added that. That's on page one. The two or three different kinds of color photocopies that we have. On page two of the fee schedule, the price for expedited shipping for a passport actually went down according to the federal schedule, so we needed to lower that. We've been charging the lower rate for, ever since they told us we needed to, but we needed to get our fee schedule in line with the rate that's being charged. So, that went from 34 down to 26, 35. On page three, the fire department's been receiving a number of requests, and they have for some time, but for incident reports. And the police had a fee in the schedule for incident reports, but fire didn't. And so, we've duplicated that, those costs from the police department over to fire in the case when incident reports were requested from the department. So, that's on page three. And then page six, and six and seven will cover the water rate increase. Those increases, as have been discussed, amount to a 10% increase, so we can go over those when we do the presentation in the council meeting.
Yes. And I'd like a full presentation on that, so that we're not, and that, and council, just so you know, I knew, I know that sometimes we do a presentation here, a more in-depth presentation here, and then a reduced one later, so this way, we're just having one big presentation for everyone to hear.
Okay.
Okay.
Are there any questions regarding any of those fees? Yes?
So, in relationship to the CARES money's, the minutes that we have in our packet says that we, the city received $6.6 million in the CARES. Have we amended the budget all along, and how much is in this amendment from the CARES money?
I can go over that here. So, the next ordinance would be 2104, and that goes through some of that. To answer your question in an over, in a kind of a general nature, we have not amended the budget for the, the entire amount. We are submitting to the State Transparency Commission the use of the public safety wages and benefits, as is allowed by the Treasury Department, and that will consume the $6.6 million by allocating those to public safety wages and benefits. So, we're not really required to amend the budget to do that. That's just how we're going to report it back to the state. And, but we did have some direct expenses up through just recently, and that's part of what's in these budget amendments that I'm bringing to you tonight. We had a total of $119,000 in, in CARES Act expenditures that were for supplies and materials and some equipment and PPE and things like that. So, those amounts needed to be put back into the department line item budgets, because they had spent that out of what was, what was meant for other types of supplies and materials and personnel and so forth. So, that's what the first part of this amendment does for the $119,000, is to allocate CARES Act funding back to the department line items related to those expenditures. Also in here, we have various grants that were awarded last fiscal year, before June 30th, related to the CARES Act, but they were specific to a department. So, there was one that got sent specifically for fire uses, one for police, one for dispatch, one for the, the CDBG program. And so, this amendment reallocates those funds into the new fiscal year. So, we closed out the fiscal year last year in June, on June 30th, and we hadn't spent all of those funds, even though we have them in our bank account, right? And so, now we need to re-budget them, so that they can be spent. And, and a number of them have already been spent to this point, but some do have balances remaining. So, that's what the remainder of these CARES Act, as a matter of fact, I believe that's all of the remaining entries in the general fund. The strike force, that was also grant revenue that was for hazmat and camera equipment, so they had a $46,000 grant related to that, which we needed to put into the budget. In emergency dispatch, I talked about the fact that there was the UCA COVID-19 grant that needs to be re-appropriated in this year's budget. Victim services, that was allocating some of the CARES Act funding towards office equipment that they needed to be able to comply with the distancing and so forth that's part of the CARES Act. CDBG, they have. the CARES Act. CDBG, they had HUD COVID-19 grant that needs to be re-appropriated in the 2021 budget, as well as down payment assistance program income. So someone has paid off their loan earlier than anticipated, so that initial down payment assistance has to come back into the program to be then again re-appropriated out on another down payment assistance. In the impact fee fund, we've, the amendment proposes to transfer park impact fee funds to the capital projects fund for the design of the pickleball complex at Ellison Park. That was $29,620. And in the capital projects fund, there is some reappropriation of wildland fire funds that are held in a capital replacement account for equipment and so forth within the capital projects fund. That needed to be re-appropriated. Again, the design of the pickleball complex. There's some CARES Act funding that went to the capital projects fund for the glass partitions that you see around some of the offices, and also for some hands-free faucets in some of the buildings. We already had those in this building, but we didn't have them in some of the other facilities around the city. Those are all things that qualify under the CARES Act to help with the social distancing and to create barriers, so, you know, slow the spread of the virus. This amendment in the capital projects fund also brings in $350,000 that was received from the county tourism tax to help with the cost of the amphitheater plaza, and $361,000 that was paid to the city by the developer for Harmony Park, which was all part of an agreement in that development. In the EMS fund, the adjustments are all related to the CARES Act and COVID-19 grants. Either re-appropriating grant money that had been received in the prior year or allocating funds for expenditures they had in the current year. In the pool fund, that's the same situation where CARES Act funding has been used to buy mostly personal protective equipment and to pay for people to cover shifts of people that have been off because of exposure to the virus. And then the water fund amendment is related to the proposed rate increase. The $442,250 represents a five-month estimate, so February through June of this current year. I believe that's all of the amendments to be adopted related to the budget. This would typically be, last year we did this kind of more in April, May, just because we got behind schedule. Typically, I would come to you about mid-year in our budget and bring forth any amendments that had happened in those first six months, July through December. And so that's one of the, one of the other purposes for coming with this, these budget amendments tonight is to get our budget back in line. And so that's, any questions related to those amendments?
I've got one, Tracy, just maybe from my information more than anything. Up at the top, can you remind me what we're paying on the downtown trolley, or how that whole thing is funded and works?
Okay, so the downtown trolley was an agreement between UDOT and the city, and originally it was with some of the hotels around town. And I don't remember if IHC was part of that or not, I apologize. But there was an agreement between multiple entities that would help fund that downtown trolley. And some of those had pulled out, but I guess related to this amendment, sorry, I'm getting wound up here, but related to this amendment, HUD, we all, we used some CDBG money to help cover our share of that because our stipulation, and it was approved through our plan that we presented to HUD, that we could use CDBG funds to cover part of our share of that trolley because it's providing transportation for low to moderate income people. In this past year, a new auditor, or maybe it was the new program director of the CDBG program, came out and denied that use. And so we tried to put up the argument, well, you approved our plan, it's been approved, it doesn't seem right that just because a new person comes in, now we have to pay back funding from prior years. We were, we were all willing to just, okay, going forward. And the person denied that and said, no, not going forward. You're gonna go back and repay all of those funds. And so that's part of what this amendment was, was that, I think it's 69,000, that we had to go back and use general fund money to, to pay for that use rather than the CDBG. But from our perspective, we did nothing wrong. We presented the idea and the plan. The plan was approved by HUD, there's, or by the CDBG people. There's, there's no question about it, right?
What's the remedy for something like that? If, is there a remedy for that? There's not? I mean, it's their money, they get to decide the conditions, even if they decide to change in Midstream?
Yeah. So where do we stand now? Some of the, because I kind of understood that their businesses were paying a good part of that. Can you just give me a breakdown, kind of, who pays for it now?
Yeah, I don't have the
Just rough?
Breakdown with me, but I know some of the original participants have pulled out.
Businesses?
And in order, yeah, I think, I think some of the hotels have pulled out because it just wasn't providing them the benefit that they thought it might provide. And so it's back down to, I think, UDOT's covering a share and the city's covering a share, and there are a few that are still participating. I don't know exactly who those are, but I know some have pulled out.
Do you have a rough idea how much we pay as a city?
I don't off the top of my head, no. Alex might have some information, but.
Yeah, this, maybe just add one thing to what Tracy said, the individual's plan. This, the one thing that HUD did do is they only required us to pay back one year, even though there were multiple years that were brought into question. So that was their way of compromising and trying to be fair with us. And so that's what this, that Tracy represented. As Tracy said, a large, quite a, quite a few, not all of them, but the majority of the businesses that were once funding it have pulled out. Some of those because of what Tracy said, that, that they don't feel like that it was bringing the value, but also COVID has affected, in the industry, you know, hotels, restaurants, and stuff, as their revenues have declined, they've been forced to look for areas to cut expenses. So Tracy's mentioned UDOT, I think you meant UTA.
Oh, UTA, yes, sorry.
Easy, easy confusion there. So it's UTA, the city, and the county are the three that are paying. But our, our portion has stayed essentially the same. The county has stepped up. They've provided a little bit larger than they were before to make up for, largely make up the gap that was created by some of the businesses. Our hope is, is that a lot of the ridership warrant is, is high.
Yeah, it is.
So we believe that it's effective, and we hope that over time as the economic situation changes, particularly in the tourism and hospitality industry, that some of those that popped off because of cuts in budgets will come, will come back on.
So do you have a rough idea how much we pay? Just rough?
I don't, I don't know the number. I think it's 70, 60, 80,000.
Maybe we're paying back 69?
So that's the one doing it.
Right.
So it's, it's
In that area.
It's pretty close. I'll, we'll get that exact figure in. And Chad Wider, he could give it to you.
You don't need to get the exact number. I'm just curious kind of where it is. And that's, that's good enough answer.
Is, is UTA's share, is that from Prop 1 money?
I don't know. It wouldn't be our Prop 1 money.
Well, part of, I thought part of the Prop 1 money for the cities was for UTA. That was, was, some of it was trails and some of it was UTA. And I'm wondering if that's where our UTA share went. If not, what are we using it for, the UTA portion?
I don't know.
My understanding of that very quickly, correctly, is that I think in the original Prop 1 legislation, a portion of that was given to UTA is not necessarily tied to this, has to be used in the cities. I think they have flexibility to use it within certain geographic areas. So it's not like, my understanding is at least that the revenue is generated and delayed, it doesn't have to be used by UTA, like, if that makes sense? So I don't know if, that's a great question, and I don't know if they're using what comes out of the late Prop 1, it's more of a, or whether they're using that stuff themselves.
Are, are there other instances where federal funding has been, we've been asked to pay it back? Are there other CDBG or other federal type of funding programs that we could potentially be at liability to pay back? 69,000 is probably not gonna, not a big hit on the general fund. I guess I just had a question of what it looks like in the future. If, if this is, does this happen before? Does it happen consistently? Or is this just kind of a one-off?
This is, oh, sorry. This is an anomaly.
Okay.
I've dealt with CDBG funds for years and years, and this is the first time I've ever seen any, anybody where there's a history of it being approved in the past, coming forward and saying, I don't care if it was approved in the past, you're gonna pay this back. And that's the reason for the compromise.
Okay.
Individual was put in there, was literally brain sergeant, and everything, you know, was this way, that way, that way, and the past person couldn't have done anything right. And that was kind of what, what poor Morgan was dealing with. And so finding this is a compromise, and that's a great thing to think that it's not worth that.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Great.
Thank you, Tracy. We'll look forward to your presentation in the next meeting, but
One last comment on that. I, I think it would be interesting to have some kind of report on the ridership and stuff like that sometime, just curiosity.
I do know. I did, I tried to get UTA to change the, the bus route and have them circle in around the memorial wall and back out. And they only change their schedule once a year. So, I mean,
Oh, they only change?
They will only change it once a year. So, I mean, that's something that, as we reach out to, out to UTA, and I know I mentioned it to Beth, but that would be, I'd still think that would be an easy change to that schedule and allow a lot of our hotel patrons to be able to come and visit the memorial wall. So.
Now, this is, you probably, it's been, we explicitly said it is denied, this is a free trolley?
Right, yeah. That's part of the free trolley. And it, it does circle, it comes down, it basically makes a loop around the city. And, and where we're getting the most ridership, you're right, is from a lot of the low-income folks that are jumping on that, taking it down to the regular train station to catch mass transit as well. But it circles through the hotels. And that's where we want to try to be able to capitalize on having it circle in here as well, because it does go down Fort Lane, from what I understand. Anyway, I know we're getting, we're getting off topic, but that would, that'd be, I'd still think that'd be a good addition to it.
But if they're not paying up, you don't have to go past them.
It's, no, the point is that UTA controls the route.
Well, no, I mean, if you're talking revising the route.
Yeah.
Then that happens.
Well, that's true, but, all right. Okay, since we adjusted our schedule, realistically, this meeting will be cut a little bit short here. But I wanted to make sure that if any of the folks are watching, that the purpose of this is so that we can then have a true public hearing in the next meeting. And so we will have our online moderator be watching. And so if anybody cares to have any public comment, if they're not here in person but online, that we'll be able to entertain those as well. So that's why I felt like it'd be prudent to go ahead and hold off on that presentation so that we can have a real formal public hearing on, on our consolidated fee schedule, which includes the water rate. That brings me down then to the last item, which is the mayor's report. And counsel, I just want to let you know that in our COG meeting, and I know that you, we've sat through one presentation already regarding perhaps the consolidation of the paramedic system throughout the whole county. And that was discussed again, and it's gaining a lot of attraction and progress there on behalf of all the cities. So we'll probably, if you feel like we need to have another presentation, that we can, we can do that, we can have them come in and make another presentation for us so that we can kind of be up to speed on that. But they, they have made great strides on it, and in fact, a little bit quicker than what we initially thought, so that's good. Yes?
So are there any major hangups that are sticking out in that?
I don't think there's any major hangups. It was more about making sure that the plan came together so that the entire county was covered, and the way that they will break it up into three geographical areas, because those areas before hadn't really been identified. Now they have. I can tell you, right, as far as that geographical area, Layton obviously would be in more or less the central hub. Our cities that would be part of our, our group would be Layton, South Weber, and what was the third one? The base, Hill Air Force Base. So we'd help, that would be part of our area. And right now, we are covering, you know, our population base, basically, we have two units, which, when you figure our population base, those two units on an average is covering about 39,000 people. With the addition of those two other areas, we would, they are planning on a third unit as well, so that we'd have three in our area. So, and then of course, you've got the south unit and then the, the northern unit as far as the district, or I mean, as far as our county.
Would those be based out of different, like, fire stations or whatever?
Yes. So, yeah, so we, ours would be based out of three, three different fire stations. And that's how they, they do the same, both in the north part of the county and the south part of the county. So anyway, the good news is, is we're making a lot of progress there. And so I think in the long run, it will benefit the entire county, because right now you've got the, primarily out west, a lot of those areas who are covered by the sheriff's department, and the response time just isn't, quite frankly, isn't there. So this will help everybody all the way around.
So are they throwing out any timelines or anything, or is it still just?
No, they do, they have a pretty good timeline now. I, I don't recall, was it '23 is when? So I think by 2023 is where they're hoping to have this thing implemented.
January 23, yes. If transition would, if the vote, if transition would be completed, the county would discontinue paramedic service, and the cities would have taken it completely over by then.
Good.
Yeah, so, progress.
How does this get approved by the cities?
So it will, everything will have to come back through us. So that, because there are, there will be some financial obligations. And so that's something that, you know, they'll, they'll put together the entire plan and then bring it back to us for, each one of the cities are gonna have to approve it. But at least now, the conversation has taken place with all the city managers, the, the fire chiefs, and of course, the sheriff's department and paramedics. So very good, open dialogue and a plan that is being well thought of. And they're, they're still kind of working through the, the complete function of it. So I think, I think in the long run, it'll be beneficial to everyone.
So mayor, does it, is it just the EMS? Or, you know, they talked to us a little bit about unified or centralized dispatch. Is that a part of this, or that's a different subject?
That is part of it, but that brings up a whole nother purview. I'll, I'll let Alex kind of enlighten us on that part.
Thank you. That's a great question. They're really, they're, they're very closely related, but they're being tracked in two different phases. There's a parallel effort that's taking place with the EMS dispatch operators. So in our cases, Carl Keen, in our city, fire, of course, provides the paramedic service, but the dispatch service comes through the police department. So the police department, Alan and Carl Keen, who's our dispatch supervisor, have been, and myself have been heavily involved in the, in the dispatch consolidation effort. But it's running on parallel paths, and there's great progress being made on both of those. And they're really, really essential, there's a synergistic relationship between the two. In order to be able to, we can put a new structure in place with the paramedic service, which, as the mayor said, will be more efficient economically in the long term, and certainly in the provision of the services and the speed with which they're provided, will be more efficient. But the consolidation of the dispatch is an important piece to make, make that happen, right? You can, you can provide the resources, but if you can't deploy those resources, which is what dispatch does in an efficient way, then, then it's an investment that won't be fully realized, the return on that, if that makes sense. So the, the good progress being made on both of those. We actually have a meeting, again, at the staff level, the mayor was talking about, next week on both of these, both of these issues to keep pressing forward. To Councilmember Morris is a great question. There's an interlocal agreement that's being proposed, which all of There's an interlocal agreement that's being proposed, which all of the cities would need to sign that acknowledges their, the commitment really to a service level, to try to, Layton's been blessed to have excellent paramedic service and provision. Layton was the first entity in the county that, clear back in the, in the nineties, nineteen ninety-four, as I recall, that got into the ambulance business, and then shortly thereafter got into the paramedic business. Prior to that, the Davis County provided all of that. And then since that time, there have been some other entities, particularly the south end of the county, through the South Davis Metro, Fire District got into the paramedic business, but Layton was really, I'm not, you know, it's, 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 Layton was forward-thinking in terms of doing that, and really has set the model. And there's other people who provide excellent services, I'm not suggesting that in any way, but it needs to continue to, you know, to evolve and, and benefit. And, and the model that is currently being deployed on has been effective, but it's, but time has outdistanced it. I mean, there's, there's only one that I'm aware of, one other entity in the entirety of the United States that runs a, a combined law enforcement, paramedic provision model. Davis County, and then there's one back east that does it. All the rest of them have, have evolved, and as was pointed out yesterday, not to belabor it, but, um, you know, when that model was put in place, the, the population of the county was hundred thousand, a little over a hundred thousand, was clear back in the seventies. And the population today is in the three, almost four hundred thousand, I believe, and it's continuing to grow. And so it's, it's, the county has done an exceptional job of providing the services, but under the current structure, it's just not possible to do it, and there's financial inequities and, and so forth. So it, it will require some effort in addition to an agreement. Each of the entities that, that want to provide paramedic service will have to, we're already in the business, so ours would just be a, uh, an addition to it. But some cities have, that are maybe getting into it from the ground up, whether it's part of a district or individually, will have to face the funding question as well, because the, the levy that was put in place back in the seventies by the county commission at the time, has never been adjusted for all those years. And so the paramedic service across the county has been underfunded, and the county's been using general fund dollars because that's all they had access to. So that, that economic ship will have to be righted just a little bit, um, and each of the entities that will have to, what's, my point is, what's coming from the, and the same thing's true of Layton, what's coming from the mill levy will be insufficient for some of these newer cities in particular to fund it, so they'll have to be looking at some additional funding sources to do it. But, but we're convinced, those that have looked at it closely, that this has been an issue for forty years, and now there's just the, the will to, to deal with it. It, it will be a significant improvement, and really position the, the whole county to, to reap the benefits of it. One of the goals, uh, and the commitments for our participation in it, has been that it needs to lift everybody, and rather than having maybe some areas where there's exceptional service and some areas where there's good service, um, because of a lot of factors, that, that everybody in this county can enjoy by working together can enjoy first-class service, and that's why this agreement's so important, because it has standards about what that service looks like, what's expected of, of each other, our commitment to each other, and so, anyway, you'll get to see all of that, as well as, well, at the appropriate time, have the discussion about the finances. We think we're in really good shape to accommodate that in a way that others may not be able to, but that'll be another important decision. It could be a sticking point, I think, that, Zach, you mentioned that individual councils will have to, to decide whether it's better to contract with somebody that's already doing it, or whether they want to stand up a unit of their own and hire the people and buy the equipment, so. I've said too much, but it's a really significant
I, we're not in these meetings, so you're our representatives. My concern is, I'm having flashbacks to the meeting we had, and I'm back to being uneasy about this, for the fact that we've, Layton citizens are paying for what we receive, and it's great coverage and exceptional service, and you call nine-one-one and you get a fire, fire comes if it need to, the police come, and I don't want to lose that level of service in Layton because another city doesn't want to pay. So there's one concern. The second's related to that, is that we've also gone through a, a property tax hike in the city for, for another fire station. More assets are being, this group here, we've allowed more assets to be purchased that will be used for this sort of service, and I'm not sure we'll get the value out of that and have to, I just don't think we should shortchange our citizens because South Weaver or Clinton City or whomever doesn't want to pay or go through the process to take care of their citizens. And then finally, the county not taking care of their business over the years shouldn't, we shouldn't have to pay for that either. So, we're kind of the big dog here, and I don't want us to lose that or not be. So in these interlocal agreements, if that's something that eventually happens, it can't just be the service, you're paying for the service, but there's assets and, and all, all sorts of other things, I would think, in that calculation of, of, to make it worth it for Layton City. That's just my, that's my opinion.
Yeah, tho, those are, those are legitimate, very legitimate questions. I don't think they're, they're real concerns, respectfully, and the only reason is because the, the consensus has been that the things you've described cannot happen, will not happen. There's nobody, there's nobody that's been involved in these discussions that has broached even that kind of, there's, there's no subsidization that's taken place from the, the current providers to the others. What it's really a, a commitment to do is to say, the south end in Layton, we have exceptional level of service. This is a plan that each, each individual entity is going to have to decide on their own to bring that level in their own communities up. Layton City's not going to subsidize anybody in that effort. The South Metro Fire District isn't going to subsidize anybody in that effort. Everybody really, at the end of the day, financially, has to stand on their own, and they have a choice to make. They can choose to take no service eventually because the county's going to, Sheriff's is going to go out of business, and that's not, that won't last, of course. Or they're going to say, I want to, because of our own concerns for our own community, a council may say, uh, Farmington, for example, is talking about this, and Shane said it openly, so I don't think I'm saying anything, but, you know, their predisposition is they can join with Fruit Heights and Kaysville and do a district, and I'll contribute, or they can choose to stand up their own unit. Shane mentioned last night that they're leaning toward, uh, so they have complete control over, and it's theirs, to standing up their own district, even if it's more expensive to do that. So every entity will have to do that, but, but Layton will not be subsidizing anybody or reducing our level of service. We're really talking about bringing everybody to our level of service, and financially, you'll have to pay your own way. The one area where, there are many benefits, as we've looked at, at the operational people. But, for example, if we have, if you have eleven units across the, the county that are, that are appropriately staffed, appropriately trained, have consistent policies, consistent procedures, then if you're a Layton citizen, wherever you go in the county, if you have a bad thing happen and you're in West Point, the level of care you'll get in West Point is the same as here. And it'll take a while, but down the road, one of the benefits, for example, is to have what's called the ABL system, which is an automatic vehicle locating system, where you can dispatch the closest unit. Now typically borders, our, our city boundaries have a significant impact, right? We usually don't run out of those unless we have a mutual aid issue. So down the road, and there has to be some technology changes on the dispatch side, et cetera. But if, if I'm on the western boundary, if I'm out on thirty-seven-hundred West at the Syracuse border, and, and I have a heart attack with ABL, which everybody needs to get to, then there may be a paramedic unit that's in Syracuse that can get to me faster if ours are tied up than somebody coming from the new station that's built east of eighty-nine. And so this, it'll have that capability, so wherever you go, including Layton residents, you'll have access to that, that higher level of service. But I'm not trying to minimize it. We, we argued extensively, the managers were pretty stubborn folks, and the, and operationally the, the chiefs, about that that is not going to happen, and everybody going into it had to understand. That's what this is about. It's, it's saying that we have an opportunity to improve the service and, and significantly improve the service, but it is going to cost money. And those, those of us who are already in the business, we've been paying that cost. We've been doing that extra funding to provide that level of service, and we're not going to diminish ours, what I owed it, in order for you to come up. So that's the decision you guys have to make, but, but this is the direction that needs to go in the county, so.
Thank you, Alex. The other, the other point, I think, I remember from last time, with that levy going away from the county, we, we receive some of that every year for our paramedic service. That'll go away. We'll have to find a way to raise that, which, that's, that's a tax.
Yeah. One of the discussions is the county levy will go away, which is the levy on our citizens currently, but that same levy would be transported in some way to Layton City. So if I'm a resident of Layton, I won't have a tax increase per se in total, but the county's rate will drop, our rate would go up for the same amount of money. For some cities, there may still be a gap, okay? And that's, the question is, is, and we may have that as well, frankly, but we have other resources. Some cities are going to have to look at whether they're going to adjust taxes in order to get that benefit. And that's, again, back to Zach's point, I think, Councilmember Blox, I think that would be one of the critical issues that each, each council will have to determine is, how do you fund that gap? Do you join with somebody else that's already abiding on a contract, or do you stand up your own? And, you know, what's the tolerance you have? But that's, it'll play out in public hearings, of course, and we'll bring all of that back to you, particularly for, you know, as it pertains to, pertains to, to Layton. And we've had a lot of input, a lot of influence, because the, the paramedic service that comes out of Layton due to the men and women of the fire department is very well-respected, and so there's a, a lot of, not necessarily deference, but there's a lot of asking about, what, what do you think, Layton? What do you think, Layton? And so we, we feel like that we've had, been responsible, but also have had a lot of influence in, in trying to make sure that these kind of things that are completely legitimate questions, because there certainly have been experiences in the county, when some of these intergovernmental things are put together, that that balance isn't always maintained. I, a lot of the city managers agree with that. But we'll be vigilant, and you'll keep us vigilant, and you'll be vigilant as you always are, and, but I think it is really a significant thing. It's to have the collective, um, consensus that exists now, when you think about thirteen or fourteen cities plus the county, both politically and operationally, to have a common view of something. That's pretty rare, and it's such a thing that it, it's important. It goes right to the health, safety and welfare, but it has to be done wisely and prudently, and those, those contracts have to be tight, and the expectations have to be real. But over time, I've said too much, but over time, I think even on the dispatch side, as you look at consolidation, Layton's going to be in a position, I think, of taking greater and greater responsibility and influence on what happens, and, and we have the capacity to do it. We have the men and women and the, and the technology and the expertise to be able to do that on the dispatch side as well, eventually. And so I think Layton will continue to have a greater role across the county, not a diminished role. And that just, we're biased, I'm biased, but that, that, that's an improvement, that will, that will make things better. But, good, great questions. Thank you.
Anything else, you guys? I just, like I said, I just wanted to bring you up to speed on, because that conversation, you know, that's first conversations come out, so I, I just felt like it was prudent to kind of get it out there so you're aware of what's, what's being discussed.
I just, maybe a procedural question, trying to get my mind around. We have a consent item, the consolidated fee schedule, of which the water increase is a major part of, part of, which is first on the agenda item in the council meeting, followed by the public hearing on the ordinance, which, a very substantial part of that is the water increase. So if, if we're going to have the public hearing and actually discuss the water rate, shouldn't we do that before we go to the consent item, which is the consolidated fee schedule?
Actually, I do have that, and that was part of my announcement at the beginning, that I was planning on swapping those two items so that we can open the public, we can have the presentation, open up the public meeting, allow for input, go on and deal with our consent item, and then come back and finish the public hearing. Does that make sense? So that, I, I, I'm just trying to look at the best way that's going to allow the greatest input, should we receive both online and in
Because you have to make a decision on the, on the public hearing before you can make a decision on the consent item. Because the
Yeah.
The public hearing is, is what we're discussing, it's the major part of the, the amendment. And so I guess my, my point was that the public hearing needs to be decided before you even touch the consent item, because, let's say the water increase is nine percent, you, you already consented to the consolidated fee schedule at ten, you'd have to go back and amend it.
True.
So
Okay. Well, I, I was planning on dealing with the public hearing first.
Sure.
Okay. That pretty much wraps up our work meeting then, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn our work meeting.
So moved.
Second. Okay, it's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. You, counsel, you'll have a break until seven o'clock, and we'll start our regular council meeting.
Longest break we've ever had.
I know it. I know.